I didn't pick one out of here. No, this one I'm believing.
Here, I'll get one.
Everybody ready?
Yes.
All the regular.
He's doing it his way, definitely. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for September 23rd, 2020. It is the latter six o'clock. Do a rule call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Present. Start off with offering a prayer by Councilmember Carla Fear, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
To pray powerfully for peace, we need to rely on God's peace and power. So I'll continue to pray for peace and hope you will too. As God guides us, may we pray regularly and often for those we know and for those we don't know. For a peace that embraces our world and our whole being, both physically and spiritually. Make me a channel of your peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Moller, Councilmember Fear, those were done so well that I would like to make sure that our mics are not muted. So if we could do that one more time, please.
Mr. Tiedemann, I think they're motioning that maybe the volume may not be on in the hallway.
Is that good? Is that good?
Thank you.
Okay, we.
Need a restart.
Where we should be.
Take two.
Take two? Okay, from the top, right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Welcome to the September 23rd, 2020 regular meeting of Hamilton City Council. We're here in the City Council Chambers 345 High Street in Hamilton. Rule call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Present. We'll have an offering of prayer by Councilmember Carla Fear, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
To pray powerfully for peace, we need to rely on God's peace and power. So I'll continue to pray for peace and hope you will too. As God guides us, may we pray regularly and often for those we know and for those we don't know. For a peace that embraces our world and our whole being, both physically and spiritually. Make me a channel of your peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can't go wrong with two pledges and two prayers. Okay, we have special presentations this evening, and we'll start off with the coronavirus COVID-19 presentation update. Health Commissioner Kay Farah.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, citizens of Hamilton. I'm coming tonight to give you an update on the COVID-19 for where we're at today. So testing data for Ohio as a whole as of today, actually, this is yesterday, was 146,753. Presumed recovered out of that is 126,023, which means that 21,730 known Ohioans are currently under isolation orders and able to infect others. As a look back two weeks ago, that number was 14,845. Again, I highlight that just because I want everyone to realize that the numbers are increasing as far as the numbers around us that are positive. So it becomes ever more important for everyone to just take precautions. And the main precaution that you need to take is that social distancing, staying six feet, more than six feet away from people. Masks are definitely a plus, but the distance will get you out of trouble faster than the mask will. The City of Hamilton Health Department is receiving still about seven to 15 new cases per day. So we've stayed pretty steady with our numbers. As far as the total number of cases in the county as a whole, there were 5,727. It's roughly a daily increase of about 63 per day. Presumed recovered for the county is 4,583. The City of Hamilton's number didn't get on there, but we're at 775 currently. We're having a daily increase average of nine new cases a day. The last number reported for positive cases by Miami University was 1,396. That was yesterday's number. So the 13-day increase was 312 cases. That's definitely settled down. And what the state has seen across the board as we've opened up colleges is as classes start, we're getting less of the bad behavior off-campus and more of the back-to-academics and the numbers come down. So that's a good thing. So we're happy about that. Hospitalized for the county, there's 401 people currently in the hospital. We're getting about 300, or three new hospitalizations each day. The death amount for the county is at 106. The City of Hamilton, 14. Out of all the deaths for the county, 33 were living in long-term care facilities. If you'll remember, the City of Hamilton last week was at 10, so we've had four deaths this week. So it is definitely affecting us. None of the 14 City of Hamilton deaths have been living at a long-term care facility. So these are people who are, you know, well enough to live on their own, out and about in the public, and they're passing due to COVID. So again, just precautions, that's what we need to take with each other and for each other. As far as the key indicators, so I always like to look at the trends so you guys kind of know where we're at. Now, this is a State of Ohio slide again. So we're gradually trending up, but nowhere near where we were about probably 16 days ago. So we're at 903 today, new cases per day. As far as deaths, again, we are not at that 87, which was probably about five or six days ago. We're down to like 52 today, new deaths for the state. Hospitalizations, 78. It's still on the rise, but nowhere near as high as it was a few days ago. And then the ICU admissions are going down, so that is a good trend there. So this slide, I didn't save properly, but we talked about the new reporting requirements for schools. So I wanted to update you a little bit on how our schools are doing. So City of Hamilton schools, we've had five total cases in the two weeks that we've reported. There was only one new one this week. And I will tell you, it's good to note that four of them were from one family. So again, that, the way that it spreads most often is in families and those type of situations. We have not had any cases associated from sitting next to each other in the classroom, and I think that's good. We'll continue to watch that. St. Joe's had two this week, and their total is two overall. St. Anne's have one total, but they didn't have any this particular week, so there's only been one at St. Anne's. St. Pete's, Emmanuel Lutheran, and Richard Island Academy all are reporting zero cases. And then Baden had four cases total, one new one this week. So overall, again, I want to applaud the schools. They're doing a tremendous job. And again, to highlight, there have been no cases that have been associated from students sitting next to each other at school. All the cases, again, are kind of mimicking what we're seeing at the university level, and it's outside. It's either sleepovers, birthday parties, sporting events, you know, it's a different kind of interaction that they're having. So I, again, continue to plead to parents to realize that it can't all be done at school. As much hard work as all these superintendents and principals are doing to keep kids safe in school, it has to continue outside of school too, otherwise we're going to lose the battle. So we have to continue to think of ways to enrich our kids that don't involve that very intimate, close contact like slumber parties and birthday parties that are up close and up front for right now. This is a slide that highlights Butler County. So again, I told you, if you go to the dashboard and you look at the overall view, you can zoom in. If you pick Butler County and highlighted it, it will show you the cases. And then that shows you the trends since COVID started. Always keep in mind that reporting somewhat lags, so don't get too happy with, you know, when the cases, like at the end, start scrolling down because sometimes it takes us a while to get the report that they were positive. And those are always reported on date of testing. So again, presumed recover, 4,672. So overall, I'm very happy with where we're going. I think things are going well. We just have to stay the course. So trick-or-treating, I was asked to do a little bit of highlight on trick-or-treating. I'm just going to give you my take on it. So the Ohio Department of Health has strongly recommended that hayrides and haunted houses be canceled. And that's because, again, it's a much less controlled situation where people are sitting in close proximity to each other. But as far as trick-or-treating, I think there's plenty of ways to do it safely. If you think about exposure times are more than 15 minutes of less than six feet apart. Kids don't come and visit with us on trick-or-treat night. They really want, they want the treats, and then they're going to go to the next household, right? So I think that most people will feel very comfortable sitting out and handing out candy or letting them come to their doors. I still think the kids have to be smart about it. I would encourage some creative kinds of things. I think we need to avoid homemade things. They really should be prepackaged goods coming out of the stores right now just because of COVID. You can consider setting your treats on the step or the porch if you believe you're at high risk or very concerned about being in the proximity of kids. That would be an answer to that. I think that if parents are going trick-or-treating with their kids and they're concerned about their high risk, bringing hand sanitizer along and frequently offering that to the kiddos to wash their hands in between. I think that you could consider having outdoor events for like costume parties instead of inside because, again, we know how it's passed, and when you're in close proximity to each other in a closed environment, those are higher-risk behaviors. So you could have it outside and, again, be more socially distant from each other. And then please be respectful. If you think you're of high risk and you're really concerned about this, turn your lights off and just don't participate this year. And I would ask that kids and parents respect that and understand that if that individual turned their lights out this year and decided not to participate, it's just because of their feelings of not feeling like they want it to participate. So just be very respectful of each other. And I think Hamiltonians are. I've not had a bad feeling about this whole COVID thing with anyone. I also suggest that people think and get creative. This is a little thing that I'll share from Andrew Beatty, and his daughter developed this. They're from Ohio. So this is his shoot, and I think people probably have seen this, but he made this out of PVC pipe, and he attached it to a step, and so he's going to shoot candy down it to keep that distance. And I think, I think you just have to learn to have fun with it and do some different things and kind of get out of your own skin with how everything has to be the same each and every year. There's ways to creatively do it. And I think this is awesome, and I stole it off of his Facebook page, so I did tab him on it. But I think trick-or-treating is something that is long history and certainly can be done safely. We just have to think smart about it and kind of deal with each other's level of comfort and just be okay with that. Any questions?
Thank you for the Halloween presentation. I know Councilmember Ryan was asking about that definitely. And the conduit pipe, that was on the news this morning as well.
Yeah.
I'm thinking maybe catapults might be kind of fun, too. But can you put that on our website and just say that these are some suggestions?
Yeah.
Without saying must.
Yeah.
Say these are suggestions.
There was also another one where they, somebody put a little picket fence up, and they had their treats hanging from it. And that said, "Take one," and it was, it was part of the decoration. It was just adorable. But I couldn't find it again when I was preparing this, so I did see it on Facebook, and I thought, "I've got to keep that." And I've lost it. I couldn't, I kept Googling, and I kept getting all kinds of other crazy things, so. But this one did. I was able to find that because I think it's hit the news several times. But we can put that, I'll ask for some help to get that on the Facebook page of people that are better at that than I am.
Any questions for Kay?
Thank you.
Thank you. There is no Arbor Day presentation. That'll be coming up at a future meeting. But we're not going to go to a really exciting program. Hamilton Citywide Internship Program, CHIPS, presented by Human Resources Director Gene Pope and Mr. Shaq and Shaman Curtis.
Please speak into these because we are recording and also stay a bit of a distance away. That way we don't get feedback. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So glad to be here. Appreciate the time to be able to present about this program. Really excited about it. I'm sure everybody, people have heard about it, like, okay, what is this, CHIPS? I'm hearing about this. Like, does somebody have a bake sale going on? Like, what's going on? So I'm sure everybody's excited to finally hear an actual formal presentation about this program. So it was pretty cool because I had the opportunity to meet with our city manager, Joshua, and then he had invited Gene to the meeting. And we began to talk about, you know, just ways of ideas to be able to, you know, be a resource to our city, offer, you know, always employment and things like that. It's very necessary and needed. And so, of course, me and Gene, we got to talk, and it was just like, boom, collided, great conversation, great energy. And we was like, okay, yeah, we're going to work together. We're going to work this out. We're going to figure out something. And try to be resourceful and bring some solutions. So here you have what was birthed from that conversation and meetings was CHIPS, Citywide Internship Program, program to be able to offer employment and internship and great jobs, shovel-ready jobs for people to be gainfully employed in the City of Hamilton. So many times you hear people say, "Hey, I got to ride out to Western, or I have to ride out to Cincinnati to find a job," when there are awesome businesses, manufacturers, and retail places for people to be able to work in the city. And there's great positions here in our own city department for people to be able to intern and know more about the city. So we thought this was great. Here you see the team. Ms. Jean, you have myself, and you have Shaman Curtis, who was a part of this, you know, brainchild of a program. And it's been many meetings, late nights and early mornings, to get this thing to fruition, to be able to offer this soon to come for our city. What is CHIPS? CHIPS is Hamilton Citywide Internship Program. It's a collaboration of Hamilton-based companies and organizations that have joined together to create local opportunities for people of color. So what is the why?
Thank you. So let's take a closer look at what is the why for creating our program. Why focus on diversity and inclusion? There are several studies that support diversity, equity, and inclusion. In a 2017 study by the Boston Consulting Group, they found diversity to be a key driver for innovation with diverse teams producing 19% more revenue. In a 2018 report by McKinsey, they found that companies in the top quartile for workforce diversity are 33% more likely to financially outperform their less diverse counterparts. So now we begin to see diverse workforces can contribute to improve performance and increase profits. Lastly, in a survey by Weber Shadwick, 47% of millennials consider diversity and inclusion an important factor when they are considering potential employers. This means our program can be an additional way to convince more young people to stay. So here's the good news. Employers get it. However, there are some challenges. If you look on the left-hand side, you'll see that there are some concerns. And talking with employers, we often hear, "It's difficult to find good, qualified applicants." Or our current outreach efforts aren't living up to what we want them to be. So we believe that we can help. So how can CHIPS help? We believe that through CHIPS, we can develop more skilled workers, we can expand the talent market, and ultimately sustain our local markets. Basically, what we're saying is that we can grow our own, and we can convince more people to want to stay and live, work, and play in Hamilton. Jeanie?
So we have the ABCs of our CHIPS programs. A, we're connecting local businesses with local talents. The B is being able to provide additional educational opportunities as well as an introduction to the commissions and boards that we want to try to diversify with our local talent here as well. And then the C is our aftercare. Our aftercare is being able to continue to keep in touch with our individuals, continue to grow their education, and import them into our workforce. So our CHIPS talent pool works by gathering together the resources that we have in our local schools, through our programs like BTW, and our partners, Easter Seals. We have positions in demanding sectors such as healthcare, advanced manufacturing, public administration, and IT. Our individuals will go ahead and work 15 to 20 hours per week in those particular industries and continue on through the workforce. Some of the jobs will continue forward after the internships. We have some great partnerships that have been worked out, and we're so happy that we do. So the role that we'd like for people to play today would be to tell everyone about this new innovative program that we have, connecting and collaborating with our organizations here in Hamilton as well as with our young people ages 16 through 30. We would like for you to create a position too, if you have an organization or know one that could utilize an intern. We would like for you to donate to our website or to the program via our website. And we also have an amazing partnership with Seals that will help fund some of these positions. Our partners are all in, and they're amazing. We have the YMCA. We have 17 Strong, which is offering to help us with mentorships with some of the community commission organizations. We're so happy about that. Our Hype Program, which is housing our CHIPS program, making donations and funding through them. Tax deductible. Check with your tax advisor, please. BTW, our Booker T. Washington Center, Easter Seals, and of course, the City of Hamilton and the Hamilton Community Foundation. Tell Ohio and 80 Acres are just some of our partners. If you have questions, please reach out to us. We do have our website listed that will be live. It's actually live now. You can make donations live to the program. And also, if you have questions or concerns, please reach us, reach out to us via phone or via email. We're happy to take your questions. And we're so happy for the support, and we certainly want to thank each and individual member of council for hearing us, supporting us, and being enthusiastic today. Thank you so much.
If we knew of a company that may want to be involved, do we direct them to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Direct them to us or the website. There is a place on the website for companies and organizations to place their information, to reach out to us via email, and again, by phone. So yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I do. Jeanie, and so much you're closest to the mic. Do you have any applicants, any candidates in the, I'll call it, in the pipeline at this time?
We do, and they're right outside, sir.
I thought I saw some people out there visiting, and that's why I asked, Jeanie, importantly, that it's ongoing. And that the plan is where it started in its infancy, and it's at the crawl stage now, certainly to our citizens and for people 16 to 30.
Yes.
To be able to take advantage of this opportunity to visit, reach out to people in the community you know, and they can put you in touch with these ladies. And importantly, get started now because the jobs are becoming available. Some of the collaborators that you mentioned, but other companies that would have opportunities here in the greater Hamilton area, easy to get to. People are looking for young adults to be able to join at those age levels, to be able to join their organizations and stay and live and work and play, kind of like you said, Shaman. We want people in our community to stay here and make Hamilton a better place for the future. Thanks, ladies.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now brings us to audience of citizens. We have had one person who has signed the book. City Clerk, Acting City Clerk, did you discuss with the individual, does he want to come in and say anything at this time?
I don't believe it pertains to an agenda item. I understand that they were trying to speak with Vice Mayor Pullman before the meeting.
Okay.
I didn't have an opportunity to speak with them, but I can try to check in with them after the meeting and connect them with the right people.
I think if you would just connect Jim with Eric for whatever kind of question, Vice Mayor Pullman, whatever kind of question he might have. Or you can contact any one of us. I don't see Jim at the window at this point in time, but hopefully he's okay with that type of handling the situation. I'm sure he is.
He's in the lobby, but I can, I can connect him with the right city staff.
Okay, great. Let's now go then to the consent agenda. That includes recognition of Daniel Tiedemann as the Acting City Clerk, approval of minutes, all staff reports, receiving and filing council information, and two informational reports, monthly financial for July and monthly investment for July. No committee to hold this meeting. So I'll set the motion regarding the consent agenda.
I move. Second.
Okay, there's a motion that council received the reports of the consent agenda, according to recommendations. Motion made by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, and I'll set the motion regarding this part of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I move that the note be made upon the minutes that each council member was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, sent to my Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to pending legislation, agenda item number one, second reading ordinance involving conditional use variance for 535 Maple Avenue.
An ordinance approving a conditional use certificate and approval for 535 Maple Avenue to allow the reoccupation of existing two-story residential structure as a single-family residence with a variance from the two required off-street parking spaces as required in Section 1137.27 of the Hamilton zoning ordinance on property located in the I-1 Limited Industrial Zoning District, Midwest Developers LLC, property owner and applicant. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, sent to my Councilmember Nab. Discussion or comment on this one? Hearing none, rule call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven-zero.
Thank you. We now go to agenda item number two, second reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of North D Street Alley.
An ordinance vacating a portion of North D Street Alley A and Alley B. Alley is located between Park Avenue Alley and Main Street, situated in the first ward, north side, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn. Did I hear which one, Ryan or Pullman?
Ryan.
Sent by Councilmember Ryan. Comments or questions about this particular legislation? Thank you for correcting me on that. Rule call vote on that, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven-zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number three, second reading ordinance vacating a portion of.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number three, second reading ordinance vacating a portion of South Martin Luther King Boulevard Alley.
An ordinance vacating a portion of South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard Alley B, located between Charles Street Alley and Pershing Avenue, in the block between South Fourth Street, South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, Pershing Avenue, and Charles Street, situated in fourth ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We go to new legislation, agenda item number four, first reading of emergency ordinance involving the purchase 326 Main Street.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the purchase of real property at 326 Main Street, David S. Dennison and Carol H. Dennison, revocable trust, property owner, City of Hamilton applicant.
Thank you. We now go to agenda item number five, but I think agenda item's number five, nine, 10, and 11, deal with some financial matters. We're asking Finance Director Dave Jones if he can kind of give us a little bit of a summary of all those above and beyond what we've already got in our packet. Mr. Jones, you want to talk to us about those ones?
I sure will. Good evening, Mayor, members of councils. I do have a presentation on those agenda items. Agenda item five is the one you're set to vote on next. On 9/17, we closed on a $31.9 million bond issue. The majority of that money went for the Spooky Nook refinance. It was to refinance the KeyBank bonds, the five-year bonds that we did back in March. The remaining money, the $1.83 million, it carries a 3.3% interest rate, it's 30 years, it's a taxable issue. Taxable means interest income is taxable to the bondholders, so that commands a higher interest rate than a tax-exempt rate. Of that $1.83 million, the ordinance you guys are going to consider next, the first two items is a grant to the CIC. It's a not to exceed $500,000, it's for a renting garage acquisition, and the acquisition of 326 Main Street, which you will also be reading that ordinance tonight. The strategic neighborhood program, I don't know if the city manager wants to address that, but there's proceeds that could possibly go for that, or would go for that.
Yes, just briefly, in our strategic planning session, we talked about our overarching objective for the next year's strategic plan really being the neighborhoods, and that money is simply being set to the side for now until we finalize what the strategic plan will look like.
So is there any questions over that agenda item?
Questions?
No.
Thank you for that, please.
Okay. So agenda item number nine is tax exempt. Bondholders do not pay interest on that.
Do you want him to wait till we get to those items, or?
If you, I mean, he's up there already right now.
Okay.
We're not voting on these tonight, these are all first readings.
Correct.
I think you just give us a summary of each one right now before we go into the readings.
Okay.
Thank you.
So agenda item number nine is tax exempt, bondholders do not pay interest, so therefore we're getting about a 1.75% interest rate, great rate. It's a 20-year issue. If you remember back to September 26, 2018, we always talked about B Street improvements for the Spooky Nook at Champion Mill project. Of that $6.2 million, there were three financing mechanisms, or three buckets, we always refer to it as the bucket presentations. $1.2 million was from the sale of this building, 345 High Street. $2.5 million is the bond issue I know you're considering tonight. I know that says $2.75 million. There's going to be some capitalized interest with that, and some additional costs. We always say not to exceed, in case something comes up, we don't have to come back to council and do this all over again. We're looking to try to close these bonds. The final $2.5 million is a contribution from Butler County. So those three buckets equal the $6.2 million contribution for the roadway improvements at Spooky Nook. Go to the next slide. The city will not be paying the debt service on this. So there's going to be additional lodging tax generated from the visitors coming into Spooky Nook, and the Butler County Convention and Visitors Bureau has agreed to pay $1.5 million over 15 years towards the debt. The capitalized interest portion of it, as you can see, it doesn't begin until 2022, so we're going to have to capitalize some interest right off the bat. We have already adopted some legislation regarding this to pay the debt service. The lodging tax used to be a 50-50 split. The lodging tax is 6%, generates about $200,000 annually. In a normal year, this year it's a little off, and currently, when Spooky Nook opens up, we start adding hotels, that will most certainly go up. In full agreement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, ordinance, emergency orders 2019-12133, change the distribution, the Convention and Visitors Bureau will get 25%. The city will get 75% to pay that debt service. And then in March of this year, council authorized the agreement with the BCVB for the $1.5 The not to exceed $2.5 million, this is a 2009 issue. Again, you could read those, but in 2009, you know, our unencumbered general fund balance was down to about $2 million, so we were doing good just to pay operating expenses. We were borrowing capital. You can see what we used, we purchased a fire, we purchased a fire engine, some roofwork, HVAC, criminal justice, bypass for work, funding for two roads at the Enterprise Park, restoration on the McDougal garage. I won't get too much in the weeds, but police and fire offered a one-time payment on some bonds that if you took advantage of it, you had a net present value savings back then, and we took advantage of that. When we refinance these, again, a 1.75%, we will keep the final maturity in 2028. The final series of bonds, right now, is over 4%, so it'll produce about a net present value savings of $140,000. So the final ordinance, that's why you've got three ordinance, it combines, if you'll switch the slides, it combines those issues into one issue, saves administrative costs, issuance costs, all of that. So we'll just do one single issue, combine them into there, and then you can see the 1.75% rate, you can see that the 2009 bonds will keep the same maturity date, we did not extend that, and the maturity on the roadway improvements has a maximum maturity of 20 years.
So 11 combines nine and 10.
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions on any of those debt issuances?
Questions, council? Thank you, I think it really cleared up some things, and much appreciated of your presentation, Dave. All right, let's go back to number five, which is an emergency ordinance, first reading, involving a CIC, and grants not exceeding $500,000 to the CIC.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, as a city's agency for development in the city, and authorizing a grant or grants an aggregate amount not to exceed $500,000 to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, for public purposes and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number six, pursuing an ordinance involving traditional neighborhood district zoning.
An ordinance amending certain sections of the Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503, related to traditional neighborhoods three, and traditional neighborhoods four zoning districts, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
We go to agenda item number seven, pursuing an ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year endings December 31, 2020.
Janie? Go to agenda item number eight, which is first reading of an ordinance involving short-term rentals.
An ordinance adding Chapter 758 Short-Term Rentals to the City of Hamilton codified ordinances to establish regulations for short-term rentals and short-term rental license. City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Yes, please.
For item number five.
Yes.
As an emergency ordinance, this was supposed to have a second reading and a vote for tonight, so I would like to read that into the record, or could you get a motion to read this into the record one more time, and then after that, a motion.
Okay. Well, you want the council to make a motion that we have a second reading of that emergency ordinance?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
It's been read once, it's been motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Ryan, that we have a read at the second time, so roll call vote on that particular motion.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Please read it a second time, and then we'll vote on that, emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, as a city's agency for development in the city, and authorizing a grant or grants an aggregate amount not to exceed $500,000 to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, for public purposes and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Roll call vote on that, motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Order, emergency ordinance adopted, seven zero.
I'm going to let the record reflect that when we went through that presentation by Mr. Jones, there were no questions or comments about agenda item number five that we just voted on.
Correct.
It's correct.
Okay. So now we go to agenda item number nine, which is also an emergency ordinance, and is it just a first reading tonight, or is there a first reading and a second reading tonight?
To my knowledge, is a first reading tonight, second reading at the next meeting, in which the item will be going into effect immediately.
Great. Thank you. So if you'll read number nine into the record?
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of limited tax general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020 of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, in the maximum principal amount of $2,750,000 for the purpose of financing costs of capital improvements made to B Street located within the city, authorizing certificate of reward, a bond purchase agreement, and continuing disclosure agreement, authorizing the preparation and delivery of an official statement or similar disclosure document, and authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of such bonds and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Go to agenda item number 10, which is first reading of emergency ordinance regarding refunding certain bonds.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of limited tax general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020 of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, in the maximum principal amount of $2,500,000 for the purpose of currently refunding certain bonds issued by the city, authorizing a certificate of award, a bond purchase agreement, an escrow agreement if necessary, and a continuing disclosure agreement, authorizing the preparation and delivery of an official statement or a similar disclosure document, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of such bonds declaring an emergency.
So nine and 10 are both just first readings tonight?
That's correct.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 11, pursuing emergency ordinance involving consolidating two bond issues.
An emergency ordinance consolidating up to two bond issues, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5,250,000 of bonds by the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Go to agenda item number 12, resolution involving the CHIPS program about which we just received the presentation.
A resolution in support of a citywide Hamilton internship program, CHIPS, supporting the growth and development of young talent.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Any questions or comments about this internship program? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 14, which is also a resolution involving a side lot, 1077 South Second Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners as a side lot, 915 Central Avenue.
Mayor?
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution to be adopted. Second.
By Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 15, resolution involving a side lot, 117 Washington Street.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owners as a side lot, 117 Washington Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution to be adopted. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion on this one? Let the record reflect all these pieces of legislation up on the screen for us to take a look at, as well as we received all of them in our packet this week. Roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 17, a resolution involving a TV Hamilton agreement.
A resolution authorizing and directing city manager to execute an agreement related to TV Hamilton.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution to be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Comment? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 16, resolution involving a side lot, 131 Hanover Street.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to adjoining property owners as a side lot, 131 Hanover Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by councilmember Brown, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 17, a resolution involving a TV Hamilton agreement.
A resolution authorizing and directing city manager to execute an agreement related to TV Hamilton.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to councilmember Fear, seconded by councilmember Brown, comment? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
And I'll go to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, I do have several items to mention. First, next week, we do have three consecutive nights of neighborhood meetings, the first one is on Monday, the 28th, we'll be meeting in Lindenwald over at Corwin Avenue, actually at the old Taylor School site, at Corn and Benninghoffen, at 5:30. It's to address a lot of the sanitary sewer smells that have been happening for actually a fairly long amount of time. I've been meeting with engineers this week who will be attending the meeting, they are going to try some different things the next few days prior to the meeting, including some additional chemicals that will be going into the manhole that's in the 600 block of Corwin, carbon filters, additional carbon filters have been ordered and should be installed in the next five business days, and houses have not received one yet, but I've challenged them in case this next round of cures do not work, to make sure that they have another slate of ideas that we can do something to mitigate the odor. So that is Monday, 28th of September, at 5:30, at the old Taylor School site. On Tuesday, September 29th, Spooky Nook is holding a neighborhood meeting. If you recall, they invited the neighbors over probably about 12 to 18 months ago to provide them information on what to expect during construction, and I'm very happy to report that we've had minimal complaints during the construction period due to the size of that construction, I think that is, they're doing very well. So they are actually having a barbecue, they've invited neighbors within, I think it was 1,000 feet of the site to come over, city council has been invited also, and the construction crews will be there. Sam just wants to say thank you to council, to the construction crews, to the neighbors for putting up with the construction so far. So that is Tuesday from 6 to roughly 8 p.m. On Wednesday evening, on Grant Circle, there will be a follow-up community meeting, this is a culmination of the two different community meetings that were held this summer. There are two speed bumps being installed this week on Grant Circle, also some trees are being installed in the upcoming week or two on Neyland Boulevard to deter people that are driving through some yards on Neyland to get to Grant Circle, some additional lighting is being installed, I think Chief Bukai may have left, I do want to thank Chief Bukai, he spent a tremendous amount of time in the past 60 days in Grant Circle and the surrounding neighborhoods, trying to address a lot of the issues that came up during the summer meetings. So that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week. Also, Jody Gunderson and I had lunch today with Gonzalo, he is the lead person for SECA that is in town. SECA will be having their groundbreaking ceremony on October 14th to start construction on their $72 million facility in Hamilton, that is obviously a huge deal, so Jody and I conveyed to Gonzalo at lunch today, city councils, you know, thank you, sincere thank you for this big investment, had the opportunity to ask him some questions about his industry, obviously they'll be making corrugated boxes in Hamilton, employing about 70 individuals, but they have a global footprint, they have facilities in 12 other countries, and mostly in Western and Central Europe at this point, this is their first North American facility, they're very proud of it, and when the COVID restrictions are eased a little bit, he said, well, I'll see a steady stream of corporate folks from Spain in Hamilton, because they are very curious about Hamilton and their new North American site, so very excited about that. The Park Avenue ramp will be closed due to continued Spooky Nook construction, they close on Monday, the 28th of September, it will not open again until October 9th. I've been working with the traffic engineers to adjust the timing of the traffic signals at Main and B and Main and C to keep the green light on longer, so we don't have a lot of congestion on that High Main Bridge, hopefully that will help somewhat, I'm sure we are going to see some backup, so if you normally take that route, I would encourage people, if there's an alternate route that may be as easy to take that. Mr. Moats, our director of utility operations, is en route to Greenup right now, as reported to the council, probably via email maybe in the last month, Unit 3 has been down for about six weeks, they're at the very end of that, and Unit 3 should be recommissioned here in the next two to three business days, so he wanted to personally be down there to make sure that was happening in a smooth fashion. Last week, the infrastructure leadership team traveled to Meldol, there was a 24,000-hour planned outage, so all three units will be down in the next couple of weeks, Unit 1 has been down, is now back up and running again, Unit 2 is currently down. I talked with Jeff Martin earlier today, Jeff is the director of both Hydros, both Greenup and Meldol, and so far, it's gone incredibly smooth. And that is my report, thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
May I ask, so with the closure of the B Street ramp, can you cross Main Street onto B Street, say alongside of, was it Rise and Shine right there, and get to Park Avenue?
No.
That will not?
No.
So all of B Street from Main, or Main on?
You will have to, you can, from C Street, you can access Park Avenue.
Correct.
Yeah, but not from B Street.
So not, okay, so it's only a street through, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, audience of council, councilmember, anything you want to say?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Now, when we talked about having TV Hamilton here, I thought it was going to be a great benefit for citizens, but I got to tell you, it's nice as a council member to be able to go back and watch it again and listen to presentations, be able to take notes, so once again, Steve, thank you for what you're doing.
Anyone else on council?
Christmas lights are going up.
Well, it is, it is Halloween.
It is Halloween.
And just to respond to that, that was a request by the Operation Pumpkin Committee to have the lights established prior to Operation Pumpkin in the next couple of weeks.
That would be a nice welcoming sight for all of our visitors.
It will.
And for Bob. Anything else on council, anybody want to say?
Mr. Mayor, will you be talking about State of the City by any chance?
I believe it's Thursday, October 1st, is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
That is correct.
That's four things that week.
Four in a row.
That is, isn't it?
Oh, busy week.
It will be a busy week next week.
Well, that's how I wanted to bring it to the city population attention, if any of you, any of you would like to attend, it is an invitation because of social distancing, it will be held at Rotary Park and on the underside of the McDoulin Garage ramp and on Market Street, so Chamber of Commerce is having, handling all reservations, if you wish to attend that afternoon, evening, late afternoon, evening event, please contact Chamber, and they will help you make reservations to do so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else? I just mentioned a few things, and some things, I think our city clerk who's been busy doing